Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Papillion La Vista Community Schools Board of Education Meeting for June 27, 2022. Prior to our regular agenda this evening, we do have a student fees hearing. So we will begin with that student fees hearing right now. Section one, call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Rule call, please.
Present.
Mr. Mather?
Here.
Present.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Lotus?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. As we note in section one of every meeting, we do have the open meetings law posted at the entrance to the boardroom. That concludes section one, call to order. Moving on to section two, our student fees hearing. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Richards.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lotus. This is a time to kind of review our student fees from the previous year as part of law and then look at student fees for our upcoming year and have any discussions around those that you feel necessary. For 2122 fee waivers without throughout the district, so you can see our free and reduced lunch numbers at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels there for about 2,711 students on free and reduced lunch in the district, about 23.4% this particular year. Fee waiver number of requests from students is on the far right-hand column. So out of those free and reduced student families, they, we had that many request fee waivers throughout the school year in our district. Fee waiver history, you can kind of see that this past year, they did go up, the requests at the elementary level and the middle school level quite a bit. High schools kind of stayed even a little down a little bit from the previous years, but that's kind of the numbers from the past five years of those fee waiver requests. Student fee accounts, so when we talk about student fee accounts, we're looking at middle, middle school and high school. So the revenue brought in at the middle school levels, the three middle schools were $150,266.32. Expenses out that they spent, $92,137. They have still about 20, over $20,000 encumbered for probably getting ready for next year with the fees, with the balance of $37,507.70. High school, on the other hand, a lot more in and outs going on at the high school level, $639,505.28 in. Revenues-wise, expense-wise, we've spent $630,965.7 of that already. Encumbered, they're getting ready for next year, too, with a lot of orders getting ready to go out. And the balance there is minus 105, 66135, which that will not be paid until they actually get the fees in for the upcoming year. But with the way the supply chain's going right now, that's why they have those encumbered and ready to go for the orders for the summer. Changes for 2122, at this time, we are not recommending policy changes within the student fee structure due to inflationary numbers and all that. We know families are, at this point, are getting hit pretty hard outside in the public world. We want to, we want to keep their fees down within the school district as much as possible, and we'll learn to work within the fees that we already have established out there. And I did provide a copy of that for you, the current fee structure that we have, so you can kind of review those. And if you see anything between now and the next board meeting, when we actually look at the, to approve the student fees, let me know if there's something there that, but it was approved last year, so I'm assuming that those fees will be good for you for the upcoming school year. The one thing we will look to change is meal prices. As you all know, a little bit of background on meal prices, federal waivers were given for the last probably one and three-quarters years. So all students within the district were able to eat free meals for, do the federal program of meal waivers. This year, that's going to end, and there's still some discussion going on at the federal level about some reimbursement prices, but they, they're pretty steady on that, that will end. And we will return to the free, reduced, and then paid categories that have been prevalent in the past. We did have, over those years, some enhanced reimbursement rates from the federal government that were upwards of a dollar more than we normally get on our reimbursable meal back. They are dialing those back again, too. So that's why we're only going to recommend a five percent, or five cent increase across the board in meal prices, even though, as I've put in the packet, you can kind of see the different percentages of the price increases that we've seen across the board within our district bidding. Bread and, bread prices are up 16.26%. Milk is going up 51%. Groceries overall, they're expecting an increase of about 12% and a little smaller increase on the highest cost entree items, which is good. Produce, overall increase of about 7% in produce items. Paper is a big increase as well, about 24%. And then labor costs, of course, when we're, if the board takes action tonight with the pair of negotiations, that usually carries over to the food service workers as well. That particular increase, we're putting that in the budget for them as well. So, you know, we're going to, we can absorb a little bit because, I mean, with the federal reimbursements that have been gained over the last one and three-quarters years, food services have done pretty well across the state in those reimbursement requests. But getting back to normal, with those reimbursement requests going down considerably for the upcoming year, we're going to be in a position where we may take a little hit in our cash reserve, but it will give us a year to kind of get back to normal. That's okay, our cash reserve got up, so we can take a little bit from there to not have a big increase in lunch prices, the way we're looking at it as a team at the business services area for lunch prices. And then kind of reanalyze after the year's over. Handout, just so you have, you can kind of see it's just across the board, breakfast at preschool, elementary, secondary levels to increase five cents, which if you put it in perspective, that's a little under nine, if every kid eats lunch every day, it'd be a little bit under $9 a year of an increase for a family with one student. Okay, so it's not a huge increase, but it is, we want to recognize that that's a hit on their budget, monthly budget, just like everything else they're having to deal with at this particular time. And then I also copied you, and if anybody in the audience would like a copy of this, we can get you that, too. But just looking at the metro area meal prices, comparably speaking, the, over the years, the business services department and lunch service has done very well in keeping the prices down. As you look at the elementary, middle, and high, Papillion La Vista is one of the lowest ones within that price structure. So it just tells me that it's a very well-run program and runs in the, in the black versus the red. So if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer anything at this time.
Not so much a question, but more a statement. We find ourselves in this position of going back to meal prices, because the federal program is ending at a time when inflation is horrible and the costs of these products are so much higher than they've ever been in the past. And just look at the dairy prices and the other, other food items. But what I am pleased to see is that we're keeping this increase at a minimum. It's not going up sizably, we'll absorb some of that, we'll have to do that because that's what we do. We don't want our families to take any more of a hit than necessary. So I appreciate the attention to that piece of this, making sure that we're not doing any more harm than we have to do as they have to start paying for school lunches again. So thank you for the diligence on that, because there's no doubt, we all know what these prices have done to us individually, as families in the supermarket when we go, but to also school districts and other businesses that are having to purchase these items as well. So thank you for the efforts on that.
No, I'd just like to echo that. I think the, the excellent budgeting and focus on expenditures and costs within the district over the last, you know, number of years, you know, puts us in a position to be able to keep these things done at a minimum because we, we have developed a nice cash reserve for these type of times when, you know, costs are going up rapidly and, you know, we may not have a chance to catch up right away. So I know we're starting to get ready to talk budget again for this next year, but a big thanks to yourself and Mr. Lewis previously on, you know, putting this district in a, in a position where we, we can take care of our students, our staff, when things like this arise. So, thank you.
You have one question. We know the federal program of free breakfast and lunch is coming to an end. Do we know the date of that? Is it covering us through summer time, or is it, has it ended effective the end of the school year?
Yeah, I believe, that's a great question. I think it goes through summer, June 30th, I believe, is what it is.
Okay, June 30th? Okay, thank you.
And summer school program, I would just point out, is a little bit different than the rules of a year-round program. So there's times in the summer programs, in the past even, that you've been able to provide free meals for students throughout the district.
And this isn't so much around the fees, but because we haven't, at least at the elementary level, we haven't had to deal with paying for the meals, are we going to be using the same service that we did a couple of years ago for the, for parents to be depositing money in the school accounts, or is that?
Yeah, we plan to use the same services that have been available in the past.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try to make sure that gets communicated, since people haven't had to do that in quite a while.
Yeah, I'll need to figure out what that is, what my password is, is there money left? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Good point, Marcus.
Any other board comments, questions regarding the student fees? All right. Thank you, Mr. Richards, for your presentation and the information. Seeing no public comment requested regarding the student fees as presented, I will adjourn the student fees, or student fees hearing at 6:12 PM. All right, now moving over to our regular agenda for, for the evening. As we've already done section one, call to order, we will skip right by that on this agenda and move straight on to section two, communications. Item A, our recognition, love the summer recognition.
We do love summer recognitions, Mr. Lotus, members of the board and members of the community who are with us this evening, as well as watching on YouTube Live. I say this every time, but because this is a special point in the agenda for us to provide recognition and honor for those that have exemplified themselves, we always like to repeat, this is one of the best parts of the agenda, in my opinion, where we get to recognize students who have distinguished themselves, as well as employees and members of the school district. And sometimes the recognitions do slow down a little bit in the summer, so we're delighted to have Ms. Quisenberry, who's in the back of the room, joining us. So AASPA, the American Association of School Personnel Administrators, provides an annual award specifically for the HR Human Resource Specialist of the Year. The AASPA Human Resource Specialist Award is given to an individual whose contributions have had significant impact on the efficiencies of the HR office and of the field of human resources, who has, at the local, state, national, or international level, distinguished herself, in this case, through leadership service, and who is a collaborative, contributing participant in personnel functions and/or programs. Ladies and gentlemen, that absolutely describes Ms. Quisenberry. She is a jack-of-all-trades, she is always willing to help out, she's a member of the community, a parent of grads, and I think it's also noteworthy that her husband, Jason, is a member of the U.S. Air Force, honorably serving his country. Melissa, would you come down and be recognized by your Board of Education? Well done, Melissa. Dr. Settles, you've got a winner right there, I don't need to tell you that. And with that, Mr. Lotus, I would conclude our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Rickley. Moving on to item B, under section two, communications, our military advisory. Welcome up Colonel Cooley. Welcome.
Welcome, Colonel.
Dr. Rickley, members of the board, thanks as always for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak before you today. I hope, well, happy June, I hope everyone, your faculty and staff of PLV schools are getting some good focused prep time and, of course, time with their families to, to enjoy. Probably the biggest news from Offutt right now is the commander of US STRATCOM, we, we were notified, will change out sometime, probably this fall. So Admiral, excuse me, Charles Richard will, will step down, and General Anthony Cotton, who is currently commanding Global Strike Command down in Louisiana, will, will come up sometime. So we're looking forward to that, that opportunity to serve as another great leader. More locally, Operation Backpack will kick off on 20 July, and that's for our DOD students who will be able to come on base and get their, get school, back to school supplies. So this year, we will not be doing the COVID-friendly version, which was the drive-through, so very happily we'll be returning to in person at the, at the youth center. So really looking forward to that. I don't have any meaningful updates for, for this forum as far as flood recovery from last month. Still moving forward, no major, no, no major problems to speak of. We're looking forward to having our, our first facility, the Lake Campus reopening April next year. We are, we're also very pleased that we were able to participate in the College World Series, we were able to host Auburn, came on, we're able to show them what we do for a living, and a really enjoyable time, and, and if there's an odd chance that any of the Auburn players or family are happening to be watching, they, they were as classy as guests as we could hope for. So it was really a great opportunity, I enjoyed it a lot. Still looking at a late September return of all the aircraft runway project is continuing to go forward with no, no delays, so as, of course, as we're getting closer and closer, less likely to have any major delays. Still late September, so again, we bring 750 airmen a day out to Lincoln on buses, and so it'd be great to be able to forego that and have, have those airmen with more time on base and, of course, more time, more time with their families. We had an out, just absolutely amazing base picnic on the 3rd of June hosted by the Offutt Advisory Councils. If anyone in this room or listening online was involved in that, a tremendous event for us. I, I, I think I can say on behalf of the wing, we, we really needed that. So it was a great opportunity to get out and enjoy some time with our, with our families, with our fellow airmen, and really appreciate what the community did. I know for my five and two-year-old, the face painting was particularly popular, and I came home with a tiger cub and a bouquet of flowers. Patriot Fest will go this weekend, 2nd of July, we're going to have live music on the parade ground, along with some, a lot of things for our kids to do in the daytime leading up to that, to the concert. So bouncy houses, vendors, it's going to be a really good time, looking forward to that a lot as well. We are in, of course, change of command season and permanent change of station season, so the, the maintenance group and the communications group have just changed out, and the operations group will change out the end of this week. So a lot of moving parts, and I really appreciate the patience that the schools already, schools, excuse me, have provided for our, our parents as they come in with a million questions, as they move into a new community and try to figure out what they, what they should be doing. So thanks a lot. And lastly, we are, you may hear something of our on-base, we have some changes to our, our fee-for-service pricing structures based on the new minimum wage policy. So for all, all federal employees, up to $15 minimum wage as a baseline. So good opportunity for us to fill some of our vacancies, but also that will change some of our fee, fee-for-service structuring. Not going to be earth-shattering, but certainly there will be some changes on what people pay on base for various things. Happy to field any questions that you might have with me.
No real questions, I just enjoy hearing everything. I had the opportunity to be, drive up on base with my wife and my daughter, and they hadn't been on base for quite some time, and we were, I was part of the first acts, and they were absolutely amazed that there's nothing down there anymore, all the wing buildings, and it's pretty much gone, so it's, it was quite a shock to them.
Yes, and then we're, we're bringing in 60,000 dump truck loads of soil to raise that entire area, all the, the, the facilities will be built on piles of soil, so, yeah, it's an enormous undertaking. I was down late last week to watch what was probably the last of the old wing headquarters to be taken down.
Wow, and I'm so glad you all are still hosting a College World Series team. I remember we hosted, when I was working with the wing, we hosted South Carolina, and they, it was a fantastic time to be able to, to meet those young men and the coaches and everything, it was a great time.
Yeah, great, they were, they were such amazing guests. They, the wing commander, Colonel Thompson, had them to her house for, for snacks, and I doubt there was a player that, that avoided shaking her hand and thanking her, so they were just classy top to bottom.
Yep.
Colonel, I wanted to thank you for being here, as always, and your presence here reminded me of at least two things that we announced at recent board meetings, I'm not sure if you were there or not, but first was, we had command staff from the U.S. Navy met with a team from the central office, as well as Papillion La Vista South, talking about our NJROTC program and how to make it even stronger. And we also found out about a month and a half ago that at least one of our schools was designated a Purple Star School in recognition of being military-friendly. So I, I just think these ongoing conversations between us and the 55th, us and STRATCOM, and us and the broader military community are absolutely critical. We don't have the number of military dependents that Bellevue has, for example, but almost 10% of our students have direct ties to the U.S. military in one way, shape, or form, and we're just very grateful for your service and what you do to support the school district.
Thank you, sir, thank you for what you do, and to the board, of course, thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Cooley. All right, moving on to item C, under section two, communications, our public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. When I call you up by name, please approach the desk with the microphone. I will ask, or please state your name and address for the record. Individual time may not exceed three minutes, and a total time for all individuals who want to speak shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority vote of the board approves extending that allocated time. Okay, with that, our first up for public comment this evening for items not on tonight's agenda, Ms. Lowen-Eby. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Lowen-Eby, I reside at 1401 Edgewater Circle, Papillion, Nebraska 68046. My comments are related to the Papillion La Vista Schools Foundation and Form 990. Mr. Bailey, Mr. Lotus, Mr. Mather, and Dr. Rickley, all of you are on the 2022 Papillion La Vista Schools Foundation Board of Directors. I want to make you aware that the foundation has not filed Form 990 for the year, for the tax years 2020 and 2021. If the foundation does not file Form 990 for three consecutive year, consecutive years, the foundation runs the risk of having the tax exemption status revoked. In addition, the foundation received a total of $862,144 in paycheck protection loans. I am tracking our district's expenditures, and as recent as 2021, our district issued a check to the foundation. Therefore, the foundation is subject to public records request. I am bringing this up to you to let you know I will be making public records requests related to the 2020, 2021 Form 990 filings. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next speaker this evening, and I failed to mention, Ms. Branco has the stopwatch over there, the first beep is at 2 minutes and 15 seconds with the final beep's at 3 minutes. Next up this evening, Ms. Brittany Holtmeyer.
Hi, Brittany Holtmeyer, 2007 Ridgewood Drive. Just regarding the last board meeting on Dr. Tafoya congratulating Mr. Rickley for the award that he had received for mental health and saying how well the district has handled, has handled mental health situations. Seeing the students suffer and the staff suffer these past couple of years, seeing the suicide numbers in our district breaks my heart. Where were you at for them? Where was the $4.69 million at? Getting texts from a family member at Monarch's. Another kid just killed himself yesterday at my school, they said on the announcements. I just think it's stupid, the school never talks about mental illness until after a kid kills themselves. They don't encourage to get help until after something happens, then it's only encouraged the day after, then everything goes back to normal at school, until it happens again, it's just a cycle. We do have a serious mental health situation, because each and every one of you had sold our kids for $4.6 million through the S.R. funding that you did not have to take. You have discriminated against the freedom of religion of these families within our district. You have discriminated, discriminated against these families' state and federal constitutional right to freedom of religion. You have sold- You have sold these kids out to receive the $4.69 million ESR money to let our community know the district did not have to take it, yet they did, and they are being a puppet and following the guidelines that were set in place to take it. We now see through those guidelines the mental health crisis that you have caused on our children and the loss of learning. And to the community, please take a look around at the other schools within the area, public, private, and you will see a difference. Some took ESR money and some did not. The ones that did not take it did not mask, did not social distance, did not close down their schools, and did not have any outbreaks.
Our next speaker this evening, Ms. Ashley Gast. Hopefully, I pronounced that right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ashley Gast. I reside at 1307 Troy Street, Papillion, Nebraska 68133. I'm a rising senior at Papillion La Vista South High School, and I am here to tell you all happy Pride Month and to remind you all that we need to remember these students even after Pride Month is over. I am in a lot of organizations and clubs at my school where I know a lot of these students. In fact, I am one of these students. And when I, and while we have been making improvements and have been trying to go in the right direction, a lot of what I see is Band-Aids over bullet holes. A club here, one of our, one of our sections of our schools more supportive than the other. But rarely do we see a large, like, school or district-wide effort to help these students who tend to face more obstacles and mental health issues because a lot of the people around them are shunning them, are not promoting their safety, to where they do not feel like it is okay to be who they are. I know plenty of students who see certain areas of school as a safe haven where they can be who they are, but they go across the school and they have to be different again. So I am here to say that I think that with our be kind message and with the compassion that we are trying to create, that we need to remember all kinds of students and not just the ones that maybe get posted on our social media all the time or who are doing great in all their sports or activities, because these students deserve a chance to be kids, to explore and express themselves, and to be who they are without worrying about whether they're going to get any kind of repercussions from student, staff, or even community members. I think what this really comes down to is respect, respecting our students' dignity and respecting our students' privacy. I think it'd be very important for you guys to maybe conduct some surveys going into the next year, find out how big of an issue this really is, because a lot of these students are afraid to come forward. A lot of these students are afraid of who they are getting exposed to the wrong people in and out of the district, and it's hurting themselves in the process. And I hate having to see my friends go through that. So I hope that when we look at our students and we go on into the next year, we go with education and we go in with understanding in trying to make sure that all types of families are okay, all types of people are okay. And that way, my friends can grow up and be kids and be who they are without feeling like they have to constantly watch each other's backs. Thank you. Happy Pride Month.
Could I just say, as an editorial side note, that Ms. Gast is a member of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. The community's heard me mentioned a number of times. We meet with eight Monarchs and eight Titans every month over lunch. And as you might imagine, based on what you just heard from Ashley, she is a very, very influential part of that group. Thank you for being here tonight, Ashley.
Thank you. All right, that concludes Item C, Public Comment on Items Not on Tonight's Agenda. Moving on to Item D, our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rickley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lotus, members of the board. As always, for our community members who are here this evening, as well as those who are watching on YouTube, welcome. We know that things sometimes have a way of slowing down a bit during the summer months, but we are thrilled that you are engaged with your board and your school district. Summer school. I don't know how many of our teachers are watching, but I want to offer a heartfelt thanks to our teachers who sacrificed part of their summer break to be part of our summer school program. We are in the last week of our summer school program, and as much as possible, we try to staff that program with district teachers rather than outsourcing from teachers from another district. And it is a sacrifice for our teachers to make, and just very pleased that they're willing to step up and help some of our neatest students during this summer period. I don't want to steal any of Mr. Richards' thunder, but we did receive preliminary notice of our property valuation increase for the coming year. It's not final until it's final. Typically, property values are certified in the state of Nebraska on August 20th, but the preliminary look was about a 9% increase, which one only need to look across the school district, up and down the 370 corridor in particular. And you can see with houses rising up and property values increasing, the one question we frequently get for our community is if property values are increasing so quickly, 9%, by any measure is a large increase in a given year, why are we not seeing relief on the property tax side? And without going into all the minutia of how our state aid formula works, when the state aid formula works properly, when your resources go up and your property tax base is your single biggest source of revenue, for us, it's $6.7 billion, your state aid goes down. So when your property tax owner opens up their tax bill or whether they keep it in escrow for the year, depending on how they operate, they may not see that, that relief that they expect to find. It's, the short answer is that's just the state aid formula and how it works. So, but with certainly a healthy thing for the school district. Quick update on the bond. Mr. Richards and his team continue to make quick work of the remaining 2018 bond projects, including La Vista West. We're doing extensive work at Ramsey Station, Monarch. We still anticipate having the bulk of the work done by this fall. Team meeting room is, I mean, to look at it from the outside, it looks like it's largely completed at Foundation Field. So we're doing some incredible things there. I think this week, we're slated to do some parking lot repair and striping, getting ready to get students back. They'll be coming back sooner than we expect. And we're also ahead of schedule on the security cameras, which we feel really good about, particularly in light of some of the shootings that we've seen across the country, including in Texas most recently. Next week, the district is hosting Congressman Bacon for a roundtable conversation. Congressman Bacon is a district resident. He's been a wonderful proponent of this school district and public schools across the country. And he meets with the superintendents about, I'd say, once, once a year to talk about issues at the federal level that may impact our schools, as well as to hear directly from the superintendent, some of the things, some of the challenges they're seeing. So I'll be sure to give you an update after we've met with, met with the congressman. Couple of important dates coming up. First day of school, doesn't seem like we should be talking about it, but it is that time. August 11th is the first day back. Calendars are available on the district website. Also wanted to remind the community that we do have a special election tomorrow. We just recently had an election, regular election last month, but we do have a special election resulting from the conviction of Congressman Fortenberry. So for those of you that weren't aware, please get out and vote. You'll be at your normal polling site. And in fact, the school district is hosting three of those sites in three of our buildings. And finally, just want to wish everybody a happy Independence Day holiday. This is a great country that we live in, the best country in the world, and for us to be able to take a step back and relax and celebrate that with our friends and families is absolutely a cherished American tradition and just wishing everybody the best holiday possible. And with that, Mr. Lotus, I would conclude my superintendent comments.
Thank you, Dr. Rickley. Move on and open it up for board comments this evening.
... of our actions. In each and every case, we have had Nebraska State Attorney General Office and/or our own personal attorney look into these claims. In all cases, the attorneys have found these claims to be frivolous and without merit. This is, affirms that our actions have been legal and in accordance to board policy. These claims have wasted money and district time that could have been more effective used elsewhere in our district. You have an advantage over the administration and the board. You can take emotions, make decisions, and take action. We do not have that luxury. We have to do research, gather the facts before we take actions, and act accordingly to law. Your actions appear to be nothing more than harassment.
Any other board comments? It is hot. All right, seeing no further board comments, we will conclude Item E under Section 2 Communications. Moving on to Item F, Committee Reports. Buildings, Grounds, and Finance.
We have not met.
Thank you, Dr. Tafoya. Human Resources and Student Services.
I met with Dr. Settles just before the meeting, and she suggested we will be meeting soon.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Witt. And Curriculum and Americanism.
We met prior to this meeting. We do have some items on the agenda that we'll be discussing later, but do want to bring into, and so those items will be discussed then. But do also want to say that we did talk a little bit about the social studies update because it's social studies review time. So we had a chance to look at some of the materials, and there's more to come on that as well. So we'll be talking later.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fisher. All right, that concludes Section 2 Communications. Moving on to Section 3 Action Items. Item A, Action by Consent.
Move to approve the action by consent as presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Fisher and a second by Mr. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dr. Tafoya?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item B, the Board Meeting Minutes of June 13th, 2022.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Witt and a second by Mr. Mader. Roll call, please.
Dr. Tafoya?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item C, the potential ratification of the paraprofessional agreement for 2022 through 2024. I will turn that over to Dr. Settles.
Thank you very much. As you see here, everything remains the same as what we discussed at the last meeting. And just the real brief overview of that, it's an 8.98% increase year one, 4.9% increase in year two, along with the other provisions that you note here. One thing I did want to mention is that following this meeting tonight, if everything goes, passes, our hope would be that later this week, we've extended a couple of invites to all of our paraprofessionals in case they wanted any more information on that. We typically share this information in August, but we know this is of particular interest to them and have already heard several really kind comments from them. So I know they're very appreciative and anxious to hear a little bit more about it. So that would happen later on this week as a follow-up.
Oh, sorry. It says that the union voted on it. Do we know what that vote was?
I, yes, I believe it was unanimous.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I move to ratify the negotiated agreement with the paraprofessional staff represented by SEIU Local 226 for the 2022-23 and the 2023-24 contract years, thereby increasing the total package by 8.98% in year one and 4.9% in year two, along with an additional 20 cents per hour for returning employees and approving other language changes as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Witt and a second by Ms. Fisher. Any further board comments, questions, discussion regarding this item?
I just want to thank Ms. Settles, Dr. Settles and her staff for the hard work on negotiating the contract and, again, let our paraprofessionals know how much we appreciate them and how much we enjoy having them in our schools and hope that anybody out there who needs a job, see Dr. Settles.
All right, seeing no further board comments or discussion and no public comment regarding this item, roll call, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Magner?
Yes. Yes.
All right, that concludes Item C under Section 3 Action Items. Moving on to Item D, Tort Claim. A tort claim was filed in May of this year in regards to, the mask mandate occurred during the 2021-22 school year by Ms. Eby. Bring that up for discussion this evening. Ms. Eby has requested to speak on this item. So I would like, if she's, would like to, I'd have you speak first before we discuss in case there's more information we need to consider.
My name is Lowen-Eby. I reside at 1401 Edgewater Circle, Papillion, Nebraska 68046. My comments are related to the agenda item, tort claim, and the advice from Ms. Karen Haas, attorney. On May 11th, 2022, I filed a claim under the Political Subdivision Tort Claim Act against Dr. Rickley for violating his oath of office bond when he posted on the PLCS website that the district will not offer religious exemptions for masks. I provided supporting evidence that can be found on papillionpatriots.org. My claim was sent to Mr. Lotus, and I copied the board as well as Dr. Rickley. I am not certain if the board or Ms. Haas took the time to review my 67 pages of the claim. However, I am certain that discrimination is not legally frivolous or meritless, as Ms. Haas stated. In addition, I am deeply troubled that this board is accepting legal advice and spending taxpayer funds with a firm that is overcharging our district and has a conflict of interest. Today, I filed a tort claim against Dr. Rickley for approving the overcharges in violation of the legal representation agreement. The details of the claim can be found on papillionpatriots.org. Mr. Lotus, thank you for acknowledging receipt of my claim. In closing, if any, if a parent that submitted an affidavit for your child for refusal to wear face masks or face coverings because of your deeply held religious belief, or pulled your child from school because of the mask mandate around August or September of 2021, and would like to learn more about filing a claim against Dr. Rickley's oath of office bond, please email me at lowen.eby@gmail.com. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Board comments, questions, discussion regarding the tort claim.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to deny the tort claim filed by Ms. Lowen-Eby.
I will second, and then I have some comments. And as you know, I usually write a book, and this is nothing different tonight, but I just want to make sure we cover all of our bases. President Lotus and the board members did receive via district email a tort claim dated May 11th, 2022 from Ms. Lowen-Eby. According to Nebraska State Statute 13-904, authority is hereby conferred upon the governing body of any political subdivision to consider, ascertain, adjust, and compromise, settle, determine, and allow any tort claim as defined by the Political Subdivision's Tort Act. As the Papillion La Vista Community Schools is a political subdivision, and as this school board is the elected body governing the school district, I believe it is appropriate that this Board of Education receive and address Ms. Eby's claim. As such, I wish to give this claim and any others that might be submitted all due process, not only for the claimant, but for the person or organization against whom the claim is levied, and in this case, it's Dr. Rickley. The bulk of Ms. Eby's claim is that the mask mandate injured her right to religious freedom as per state and federal constitution. Ms. Eby states that Dr. Rickley should have kept masks optional, or if masks required, not deny religious affidavits. This seems to be an ongoing endeavor by Ms. Eby, as she has attempted multiple efforts in the past stating constitutional religious freedom. Point in fact, on October 5th, 2020, Dr. Rickley received a letter from Ms. Eby stating, quote, "I write this cease and desist letter to request you rescind the 2020-2021 PLCS Return to School Plan because the plan is unlawful and illegal. I am writing this letter as a parent, a taxpayer, and a member of the community. I understand the intentions of the 2020-2021 Return to School Plan goals are to protect the physical and mental health of students and staff." the physical and mental health of students and staff. However, the goals are violations of our fundamental rights and civil liberties." On October 9th, 2020, acting on behalf of the district, KSB Law followed up with a reply that all future correspondence regarding masking protocols be directed to the law firm, and a letter was sent to Ms. Eby explaining that, and I quote, "There is no legal basis for you, Ms. Eby, to challenge the district's universal masking requirement. The masking policy is a facially neutral policy, applying equal to all students and staff. The district is protecting its students. There is no affront to religious liberty or equal protection." So what is a tort claim? Nebraska State Statute 13-903, Section 4 states in part, "Tort claim shall mean any claim against a political subdivision for money only on account of damage to or loss of property or on account of personal injury or death caused by the negligent or wrongful act or omission of any employee of the political subdivision while acting within the scope of his or her office of employment." According to Statute 13-910, the Political Subdivision's Tort Act claim shall not apply to any claim based upon or act or omission of an employee of a political subdivision exercising due care in the execution of a statute, ordinance, or officially adopted resolution, rule, or regulation, whether or not such statute, ordinance, resolution, rule, or regulation is valid. Based on 13903 and 910, I submit that Dr. Rickley, as an employee of the Papillion-Lavista Community Schools, exercised operational discretion in accordance with district policy, as stated, Policy 2201, the general duties of a superintendent. All aspects of overall school administration are delegated to the superintendent. He shall fulfill his duties in accord with board policy and his delegated responsibility for the implementation of board decisions concerning the internal operation of the schools. The superintendent is the administrative head of all divisions and departments of the school system. The superintendent is encouraged to seek the board's counsel when decisions based upon existing policy are controversial or motion laden. If he must make decisions prior to council with the board, a later discussion with the board is invited to help the board support the superintendent in the face of possible criticism or objections. In Policy 5601, School Health and Welfare, the district will consider local, state, and national recommendations and cooperate with the Health Department in developing procedures for the control of communicable diseases in schools. All procedures shall conform to standards set by the Health Department." Was Dr. Rickley acting within his official duty as superintendent? Yes. Was there policy and a resolution to support the action? Yes. Did the superintendent engage the board in making this decision? Yes. Did the superintendent conform to standards set by the Health Department? Yes. Now, looking into the allegation within Ms. Eby's claim regarding oath of office. In the claim, Ms. Eby cites State Statute 11-101, which alleges that Dr. Rickley did not uphold his oath of office. 11-101 provides that the oath of office is for officers of state and political subdivisions, except constitutional officers, and it goes on to provide a sample statement of oath. However, 11-101 also states in annotation number three, "School district officers are not required to take this oath as prescribed by this section, as the term district applies only to judicial districts and the term municipal to villages, towns, and cities." I believe that 11-101 is not relevant and therefore meritless in this claim. It is my recommendation, based on these facts that I have identified, that Dr. Rickley was not wrongful or negligent, that he acted appropriately without discrimination and with due process to assure the welfare of the school district and community as a whole, acting within his required duties as superintendent in consultation with the school board, Health Department, and other local school districts to make the best and most responsible decision for the greater good. I support this motion to reject Ms. Eby's tort claim dated May 11th, 2022, as legally frivolous and meritless. In addition, this morning, Ms. Eby has submitted a second tort claim seeking damages because the district paid legal bills that she assumes were inappropriately charged and paid. Again, this is the same issue that was raised by Ms. Eby in an email dated April 8th, 2022, to Assistant Superintendent of Businesses, Mr. Brett Richards, and for which she now submits a tort claim for $1,000 in damages. In Ms. Eby's claim submitted this morning, she references State Statute 11-101.01, which specifically addresses oath of office for school districts and those who receive public funds to pay salaries. This statute nor does this oath of office have any bearing on the district's obligation to pay its bills. The evidence presented by Ms. Eby does not contain enough detail to judge the validity of her claim and does not change the fact that the superintendent acted according to his duty. Dr. Rickley was not wrongful or negligent, and I see no relevance in how paying a bill has caused injury to Ms. Eby. I submit that this claim is also frivolous and meritless on its face and should be rejected as well. And therefore, I would like to amend the motion to also deny the tort claim dated today and the one dated May 11th.
We have an amended motion by Ms. Witt and a second by Mr. Bailey. Other board comments?
I have a comments as well.
Okay.
In response to the tort claim dated May 11th, 2022 by Ms. Eby, I did some research, including reading that entire 67-page document that she sent us. To begin with, I looked up the definitions of both meritless and frivolous. Meritless is defined as worthless or undeserving. As pertaining to the law, it's defined as lacking some or all of the legal or substantive elements required to have a prospect of success. Frivolous is defined as not having any serious purpose or value. The definition included the example of frivolous litigation, so I looked that up as well. Frivolous litigation is the use of legal processes with apparent disregard for the merit of one's own arguments. It includes presenting an argument with reason to know that it would certainly fail or acting without a basic level of diligence in researching the relevant laws or facts. I believe both of these tort claims are definitely meritless and frivolous litigation. Ms. Eby has been against the school district mask mandate since I took office in January 2021. I know she was against the mask mandate even prior to that time, based on the dated letters referenced by Ms. Witt and that I will reference as well. I have no problem with Ms. Eby's opinions, and she is welcome to express those as much as she would like to. However, the school board and Dr. Rickley agreed it was in the best interest of the students, faculty, and staff of the Papillion-Lavista School District to enact a mask mandate to keep everyone as safe as possible and in school. Ms. Eby has tried a number of methods to stop the school district from keeping the mask mandate. These include numerous emails with data stating why masks won't work, a website started for the sole purpose of educating parents and taxpayers of her facts about the pandemic and masks. She also wrote a cease and desist letter to Dr. Rickley dated October 5th, 2020, which she referenced, requesting the 2020-2021 school year Return to School Plan be rescinded because the plan was, and I quote, "unlawful and illegal." In that letter, Ms. Eby's first argument was that the district was violating student rights to freely exercise their religious beliefs. Dr. Rickley referred that letter to the KSB school law firm who represents Papillion-Lavista Community Schools. In a letter dated October 9th, 2020, which you also referenced, Karen Hasi from KSB responded to Ms. Eby's cease and desist letter by stating, and I quote, "While the school district appreciates your enthusiasm for the rights of its students, nothing in your letter requires the district to take any action at all. No policy, no statute, no amendment, and no regulation inhibits the district from requiring masks to protect the safety of its students and staff," unquote. And another quote, "In these unprecedented times, it is inevitable that well-intended people will have differences of opinion about the priority of various strategies to control the spread of the novel coronavirus. However, disagreements, even if they are based on strongly held principles, do not create the basis for a legal challenge. None of the grounds you identify in your correspondence create any legal basis for you to challenge the district's universal masking requirement," end quote. Based on this letter, it's clear that Ms. Eby was instructed that her claims against Dr. Rickley and the Papillion-Lavista School District did not have any legal standing. Instead of ending her campaign against Dr. Rickley and the district, Ms. Eby continued to try other means to win her case. Ms. Eby attended the school board meetings and demanded that the school board members, excuse me, fired Dr. Rickley. When the school board didn't acquiesce to that request, Ms. Eby launched a drive to recall four of the six current school board members. Ms. Eby was informed that three of those members were protected from a recall based on the upcoming election's schedule. Ms. Eby then changed her plan to recall the remaining member, Ms. Valerie Fisher. The recall failed to achieve the required signatures, so Ms. Eby tried again by filing the current tort claim against Dr. Rickley, stating he failed to uphold his oath of office based on the same argument of the freedom of religion violation. She filed this tort with the state of Nebraska and was told it wasn't in their jurisdiction. She then filed the claim with Sarpy County Treasurer's Office and was told by the Sarpy County Attorney it wasn't their jurisdiction either. So she finally filed the claim for the third time with the Papillion-Lavista School Board. So coming full circle to the beginning of this letter, I believe this tort claim is meritless because it is lacking the substantive elements required to have a prospect of success. Ms. Eby was told almost two years ago by Ms. Hasi that there was nothing legally that inhibited the district from requiring masks. Ms. Eby disregarded that letter and instead filed a tort claim, a legal action, against Dr. Rickley. Ms. Eby knew that her chances of success were zero, but filed the claim anyway. Ms. Eby's claim is legally frivolous for the same reasons. She uses the legal processes with apparent disregard for the merit of one's own arguments, including presenting an argument with reason to know that it would certainly fail. As Papillion-Lavista school board members, we owe it to our taxpayers to end this and deny both tort claims dated May 11th and today filed by Ms. Eby. And as was stated by Ms. Sue Ann Witt, Ms. Eby filed that additional claim today, stating that he did not faithfully and impartially perform his duties as superintendent of Papillion-Lavista Community Schools when he authorized those checks in excess of the hourly rate from the legal representation agreement. I agree with Ms. Witt's comments that Ms. Eby's second tort claim is also frivolous and meritless and recommend the school board reject it. I also wanted to say something personally here, and I think you brought it up, Dr. Defoe, that I find the situation ironic that Ms. Eby files a tort claim saying the school district pays too much to the KSB legal services when Ms. Eby's multiple school requests and tort claims make up most of the reasons we have to enlist these attorney services in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments, discussion?
This is in, you know, for me, I want our public to feel confident that they can come and speak to the board and share their concerns, but I do expect that we are going to do our due diligence as a board when claims are filed or when questions are asked to provide the appropriate information. That's the job of the Board of Education, and I believe that we have done that to the best of our ability. We are not legal experts. Therefore, we have legal representation to help us with these decisions, to make sure that we're following all of the proper procedures, crossing our i's, if you want to say, and dotting our i's. So we have done that. This has been clearly communicated multiple times, and I think you gave great definitions. Because when somebody reads that something is frivolous or meritless, they may think of that in a negative connotation, but I think you did a great job providing appropriate definitions for those words that fit these cases, these tort claims exact. I do support the board's decision, our standing that we are taking with this. I appreciate that public have concerns, but I also think that we, as a board, have to uphold for the public interest what we believe is the right thing, and in this case, I support this decision.
Any other board comments? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call, please. We did, or I did modify, or they modified the motion and then a second.
Okay. So a motion again, Mr. Bailey and then Ms. Witt.
Correct. The modification was, yes. Ms. Witt, motion with the modification. With the amendment to the original motion, and Mr. Bailey seconded that amendment.
So just so it's clear, would you just repeat the motion that they'll be voting on, Ms. America?
Motion to deny the tort claim filed by Ms. Eby, and we are making an amendment to approve the June 27, 2022 claim that was filed today.
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right. That concludes section three, action items. Moving on to section four, our discussion and information items for this evening. Item A, our athletics and activities yearly report. I'll welcome up, is that Mr. Ryan and Mr. Van Ackeren back there?
Thanks for having us. Well, as I talked to Becky Myers when I came in, and I said, she goes, you have a presentation tonight, and I said, well, yeah, I thought Jason and I, this was going to be a one- and two-year deal, and this is our ninth year doing this, so. We're still going, I guess. I don't know. But before we start, I'd like to thank Jason. I know he's moving on to the principal role, and we've worked side by side for nine years. It's been great. So I wish him the best, and it's been a great relationship, so. Good work, my friend.
Thank you. You bet. Likewise with Jeremy, we probably talk on the phone two or three times a day, even in the summer, and that'll continue. And nine years in this together, and it's been, in our minds, not only a great relationship, but a benefit to our student athletes, those involved in activities and athletics. And we continue to, you know, compete against each other on Friday nights a lot, but we're supporters of each other and our coaches and our students and our sponsors, so that's a big deal. Again, just a review of our philosophy, athletics, and activities. You know, and this is all promoted by the National Federation and the Nebraska School Activities Association, student-centered, education on lifelong values, countless opportunities to grow and develop, well-rounded, multi-sports, multi-activities. I think both of our schools, even in a large school, we really promote that, and it's something we live by. We continue to try to recruit and retain students and get them involved. And our coaches and sponsors, to do this, we have to work together. Last two Saturdays, I've given reunion tours up at Monarch High, and they're blown away, first and foremost, of the changes and don't recognize it, but every one to a t, they talk about their debate coach and their FPLA and their DECA and their football coach and where's the wrestling trophy? And it's just a great reminder of what student activities and athletics are all about. And I think sometimes, all of us, and Jeremy and I both, you know, we're competitive, but we have to really think about how we define success in athletics. Yes, we want to win championships. Yes, we want to be competitive, but at the end of the day, just being involved, being associated, getting connected, just hearing these, the class of 72 was here two weeks ago, and the class of 87, just to hear them talk about their relationships and their values and what they learned, and just the memories that are created, being involved in athletics and activities, it's a big deal.
As you can see, there's our enrollment from this year and then moving forward to next year, staying pretty similar. We're down a little bit, but yet our ranking in Class A is probably a little bit higher due to the fact there's two new OPS schools. They're going to start at a low enrollment, so we're right in the middle. It's where we have been. There'll be 32 to 34 schools. Gretna will have another one here in the fall of '23, so the metro area is growing rapidly. NSA does an award every year. They call it the Cup Standings. It encompasses everything the DNSA sponsors, which is athletics and activities. So both schools continue to be successful. We tied for 12th overall, Monarchs for 14th. There's the girls and boys breakdown. Both got a little work to do with our boys, but that's been a theme here a little bit with us, but, you know, we're in the upper half, which is good. The landscape has changed greatly. There's a lot of transferring. The May 1st list, if you know much about that, those numbers are as high as I've ever seen it. There are schools with 27 kids, 28 kids on their May 1st list. Jason and I have very few, so it's a battle in that direction, but.
Yeah. We feel good about this. You know, yes, we want to be in the top 10 and be in the top five, and one day, maybe one of our schools win the thing, but to be in the top half of Class A, we're pretty well-rounded, especially when we're right in the middle of the population of schools. So we feel pretty good about this. Next, just some highlights. Obviously, Papillion in the South, they're volleyball in the fall, state champions, and typically, we tend to have more athletic teams be state champions, but volleyball was it this past year. Our journalism team, under Mr. Rahatchek, state runner-up again. We continue to do outstanding things in journalism. Both schools, multiple individual state champions, multiple teams qualified for state. The all-state and all-conference honors. qualified for state, the all-state and all-conference honors. Those are fun to look at. Lincoln Journal Star does a nice publication in April with all the athletics and activities, all-state academics, and both our schools are really, really well-represented, and additions to our all-state Hall of Fame. So pretty successful '21-'22 campaign.
We broke this into two slides, but, you know, we don't want to overlook the activity part of it. It encompasses a lot of things, especially in the fine arts area. Our marching band was NSBA state champions this year, first time ever. We also host our own invite. Show Choir had a great year. They placed first in a lot of different events. We also host our own invite with Show Choir. DECA had its best year, I think, in school history. Twelve state champions, 18 national qualifiers, and one international qualifier. I had to ask to know what that was. And so international qualifiers, somebody who takes places in the top three as an individual or team event, and top two for written projects. Skills USA had five state champions and 16 national qualifiers. Play productions were great. We have a new director this year, Mary Dixon. She's learning as she's going, but she has a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of kids involved, and it's been great. Dance and Cheer both had a good year. Dance was first place at regionals. Journalism, we did have an individual state champion, and he was a foreign exchange student. So we had to hurry up and get his picture taken before he went back to Germany. So he was heading back there. I asked him, I said, are you ready to go back? And he said, not really. I'd like to stay. So says a lot about our community. And NJROTC had a successful drill season. They present colors at many, many different events throughout the community.
Some highlights from the Monarchs, several superior ratings for our marching band. Our show choir won two events, grand champions. They competed in Sioux Falls. Again, DECA, lots of national qualifiers. Skills USA, I was informed today that we had a graduate from Monarch High, a 2021 graduate, who was in Skills USA, went to Wayne State College this year as a freshman, competed in Atlanta this past weekend and finished first overall. And he attributed, he went right back to our STEM teachers at Monarch and gave them all the credit. So again, it carries on. So well done to those folks. SpongeBob, our Spring Musical, was awarded as one of the top outstanding productions in the state this year, and they continue to do great things. And you can see our dance team was very competitive as well.
Just some celebrations from Jason and I and from the year. Our athletic trainers were our full-time employees. We're actually losing ours. If anybody knows Cheyenne, she's moving to Texas. It's a big loss for us, but we hired an individual who's from the Bellevue area, and we think she's going to do a great job. So it's great to have those guys full-time in our building. Second year in a row, we've had bowling, and sanctioned sport for both boys and girls. We've both had good years. Girls wrestling was fully sanctioned this year. We did not have a program. We have hired a young lady from Omaha Central that was a wrestling coach there, and so she's very excited about getting this going in our building. So we're going to hit the ground running with her. NSA, we successfully navigated COVID for all sports, especially the first semester. We got through that, and things got back to fairly normal terms the second semester. We do use Papillion Landing a lot for winter conditioning, and spring sports use it when the weather's poor. And then Jason had made a softball tournament there. We're going to have one there this year. Metro Tournament is there, I believe. Unified sports continue to grow. We got a lot of numbers there. We did try online ticketing this year through a company called GoFan, which the NSA uses, which is cashless. We're going to try to go a little bit more that direction next year. Just take the money part out of it. It's a lot more convenient, and a lot of places use it anyway. So, and then this was our first year, I believe, with first student transportation. So we did have a few hiccups, but overall, it's been really good. Been very, very good. I'd like to thank you guys for recognizing our students and our faculty who do great things. They look forward to that, and when you send pictures and that kind of thing, I think it says a lot about you guys. So thanks a lot for that.
On note on the girls wrestling, that was a, we had a strong team at Monarch High, and 12 to 15 girls for most of the year, and we were metro champions in the metro tournament. So lots of momentum in our girls wrestling program. Some challenges, again, COVID-related, Jeremy talked about that. Budgets continue, as just like we talked with the food prices, equipment prices, and official prices continue to increase. Finding workers at our events to take tickets, to do concessions, to call lines at volleyball games, that's getting harder and harder. Scheduling, we talked about the growing conference and just trying to work that out. And with the number of teams in Class A and 20-plus schools in the metro conference, that can be problematic a little bit. Live streaming events, that's been lots of positives with that, but there's also, you know, some challenges arise with that as well, and with technology isn't working, or the, you know, you don't have a broadcaster and those type of things. But we're in a pretty good place at both schools. Official shortage, this is real. All sports, there's a summit in Carney later this summer to try to attract young people. It's our jobs as leaders in buildings to continue to model sportsmanship with our coaches and our parents. So with official shortage, the supply and demand goes up. We're paying our officials more, and that falls in the budget. But with no officials, there's no contest, and it's getting real. And we had to move some baseball games this spring to different places because they didn't have enough officials just to go to do a single game. So, and we're in the Omaha suburban area, so that's concerning. We talked about the cost. This spring was probably the worst, worst spring weather-wise that I can remember in my nine years, and trying to reschedule and transportation and working out calendars. But we made it through. But those are real, real issues.
Jason and I are very active in the metro and the state as far as hosting and helping with different things. So as you can see, we host Metro Cross Country at Walnut up on our campus. Jason and I host Metro Volleyball. Both those events are in October. They're very close in proximity. Metro Basketball, Jason's been involved with, that's in December. We both help with state baseball, which is in May. Class A and Class B are both in Omaha now. They used to be split. One used to be in Omaha, and one used to be in Lincoln. Now they're both here, so that increases our time a little bit. But, and we host multiple tournaments throughout the year as well. So other roles, I'm on the NSIA AAA Board. I was a president for two years. I'm now the past president, which is a good thing, I guess. I don't know. We're both on the Metro Conference Executive Committee. Jason's is getting off, and I'm replacing him. And then we're in District 2 and do some things with that. And then we have all the NSA responsibilities to go with that. So we're pretty busy throughout the year.
Going forward, and we've touched on this a little bit, Metro Conference, the landscape continues to change. Class A is growing every year. The new high schools, scheduling, lower levels. When new high schools come in, Buena Vista, for example, in OPS, you know, they're going to have a varsity team, maybe a freshman team, maybe not. So when they're on your schedule, you like to have a full schedule, so all your levels can play. And sometimes you get schools that they only have one level. So then you're trying to find other schools to fill those spots, and it can be putting those pieces of the puzzle together. Budgeting, and I'll say this, Mr. Richards has been great, and we're very supportive of our athletic and activity programs from a budget standpoint. We appreciate that. He understands the rising costs and how important. So thank you, Brett, for your work this year with us. Coaches and sponsors, and it starts with us to recruit them and then to retain them. We've got to continue to show appreciation. You know, our coaches aren't in it for the money, how we define success, but it's getting harder. We have major jobs open. Our boys' basketball job was open this year, and 10 years ago, you might have 50 or 60 applicants. I think this year, we had eight to 10. And so finding coaches, coaches don't want to do it anymore. It's a 12-year deal instead of maybe six months. The job's getting harder and harder. So finding those people, finding the right person, and again, we've got to be creative, but we're both schools, we're in a good spot with that. Jeremy talked about the cashless events potentially. We're looking at that. Mental health training for our athletes. Both our schools work with Dr. Larry Woodman, who's a school psychologist, or not school, he's a licensed psychologist, that works with some of our teams, and just about confidence and self-talk and everything from failing to having success, and how do you handle success, how do you be a good teammate, and just another support system in place. And some of our sports programs have used them, and those Jeremy's has, and that's kind of the world we're living in. We feel great about the partnership that we have with even our own social workers in our building that have helped with some of our activities and our athletic programs. And we're going to continue to, sometimes less is more. Less practice, more experts coming in to visit with our students. And then continue to look at facility improvements to keep up with others. You know, we look across the metro area and what schools are doing with facilities. It's important that we continue to stay up and stay ahead of the game. And again, Mr. Richards, Dr. Rickley, and our board have been very receptive to that, and that'll need to continue for us to continue to be competitive. So thank you for your commitment and support.
I want to thank you guys for the presentation and all the work over last year. Hopefully, this next school year is more like a normal year for you, less rescheduling, less restrictions as far as like who can be at the games and get back to normal. I have a specific question regarding the basketball. They're doing a shot clock this year?
Yes.
Do you have to refit the gyms for shot clocks?
So, yeah, great, great point. So Class A is going to shot clock next year.
For both boys and girls?
Both boys and girls. And our shot clocks were installed Friday of last week, actually, and we've got some work to do with some electrical work to get those ready to go. But, yeah, they're varsity competition only, and they'll be, shot clocks will be in both main gyms at our school and Papillion to the South. So we're excited about it, and some of the summer tournaments, our teams are playing and are utilizing it to get a kind of a little sneak preview. But yes, that will go into effect.
Gentlemen, thanks for being here tonight. This has turned into an annual thing, as you observed at the beginning, and it's really great, not only to see how our programs and activities have grown over the years, but the collaboration between Monarch and Titan, which there'll always be that healthy level of competition, which is a good thing, but at the same time, we're one family, we're one district. Real specific question, you may not be able to answer this, but we understand that there may be a national showcase event involving volleyball later this fall. Can you guys, whatever you could share, it's kind of exciting news for our community.
Yeah, it was kind of, our volleyball coach, Katie Tarmann, got an email from a marketing company. She thought it was a junk email. She finally received the third one and sent it to me and said, is this for real? And I said, well, I'll check it out, and it is. Paragon Marketing, who works with ESPN, is putting on an event in our gym. It's four teams, team from California, team from Florida, team from Idaho. So there are two matches on Friday, October 7. Works out great. We don't have school. We don't have a home football game, so it worked out really, really good. And then Saturday, there'll be two more as well. So game times are 4:00 and 6:30. Just, it was, it was either going to be here or in Florida. We said, well, if it's in Florida, we probably won't go. And she said, we've never done anything in Nebraska. And we said, well, why don't you come to Nebraska? So, yeah, they take care of everything, take care of all the expenses for the teams that are coming. So it's a big deal. The matches will be on live on ESPN U and ESPN Plus, so both days.
Mr. Van Akron, we know that Titan ended the season nationally ranked. I think we finished second or third, as I seem to recall. These other three teams that are participating in the tournament, are they big-name, nationally-ranked-type of volleyball programs? What level of competition can we expect to see?
Yeah, I believe the team in California was number one, finished one, I believe. So, yes, they're consistently in the top five or 10. So you wouldn't think Idaho would be a volleyball hub, but I got informed that they are. So, yeah.
I just wanted to say thanks as well, and congrats on your new job. You're not allowed to leave. You got to train somebody, so you got to stay. I was, I thought maybe with all the accomplishments, you'd still be allowed to claim Jordy Ball in there as a national champion.
Yes, yes, yes.
I just want to say how much I have enjoyed the way you guys work together, present together, the collaboration that we have seen, because I believe that has truly brought this district so far with athletics. But I'm going to focus also on the activities. I can remember years and years and years ago where it was athletics, oh, and activities. But you have made sure that both, all of them are given their due, and I so appreciate that. This is truly an example, watching the two of you, of how to work together even when there's friendly competition going on, and how to work together for the success of our students and our community. So thank you for all that you do and all you will continue to do for this district.
I'll make it short and sweet, but thank you to your families for allowing you to do what you do. For those of you that don't go to activities or events very often, these gentlemen do not miss anything. They are at every activity, every sporting event, doing all kinds of things behind the scenes. So we know the countless hours that you put in to everything and how dedicated you are to your staff and our students. So on behalf of the district, a huge thank you to you and your families for the amount of effort and time you put in to everything, as Ms. Fisher said, activities and athletics. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, that wraps up Item A, Athletics and Activities Yearly Report, under Section 4 Discussion and Information Items. Moving on to Item B, the tentative clerical negotiations for 2022 through 2024. Dr. Settles?
Thank you very much. Yes, so in the last several weeks, we have been negotiating with our para group, and they also are part of the local 226 SEIU union, and they did vote to ratify the proposed agreement that we tentatively agreed upon. I'd like to thank HR Subcommittee for their help with that. So now it's time for us to share this with you. The provisions of that contract would include a two-year agreement, which we typically do with this group. And that begins on September 1. Unlike the one that you did earlier tonight, this one is a September 1 start. What the proposal would be is a 4% increase in year one for current employees, and then 70 cents per hour of an increase for current employees in year two. Our base wage for each of those two years would go up by 35 cents an hour. And we already felt like we were in a pretty decent spot as far as hourly, so we decided to really put the money on those that have been here. Those of you who keep track of this, you can see this is a group that really retention is, they very much stay, and we appreciate it. They come here, they stay. They have seen our schools and our school leaders and teachers and classified staff, just been right by them through a lot of hard times, obviously. And so we really appreciate that we have high retention rate among this group. This is a group of go-tos. They know what they're doing. They come to the schools and they stay for a long time. So we really appreciate that. We also updated a couple of things with personal leave in adding in a longevity factor with that. So that was a part of what you saw in your packet, along with just a couple of minor changes as far as some of the other language. So you can see the new rates on there for those that would be newly hired and coming in. Those range between $17.20 an hour to $18.20 an hour. I also just wanted to mention that insurance is a piece of this, and for this group, going into this, we knew the insurance costs, take into account about $43,000 of an increase going into the next year. The 40, or I'm sorry, the 4% ends up being somewhere between 70 cents an hour and 93 cents an hour, depending on where they currently are at. Are there any questions I can help to answer?
No questions. And again, appreciate all the work that goes into this. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Settles. All right. With no further board discussion and no public comment for Item C, we will conclude Item C, move on to Item D, Policy 6000 Instruction. Oh, my gosh, jumping. Trust. Sorry. That concludes Item B. We need to move on to Item C. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Skipping over stuff. I will turn it over to Ms. Siri.
Yeah. Good evening, Board of Education. Tonight, I am presenting to you the assurance statements as part of the requirement. As Ms. Fisher described earlier, the American Civics Subcommittee met prior to this meeting, where we go through those assurances. That is in compliance with State Statute seven-nine dash seven-two-four. I also captured for you a little background and summary information there as part of the summary for this. This is for our assurances for multicultural education. It is a component of basically everything we do, our curriculum, our instruction, and our assessment, and we have strategically put components in place to ensure that we are delivering a well-rounded education that does represent multiple, multiple cultures and protects those cultures as well. You can see there listed, part of that is, a, a large part of that is our Curriculum Toolbox process. That again is our team that we utilize with classroom teachers and folks from the Curriculum Department that really work on taking the state standards and aligning them with our curriculum. We have several pieces in that process that gives us information to ensure that we are hitting those assurances. That would include also the review of curriculum materials as we evaluate those to make sure that they're matching a need, as well as our building principles. Each year, we go through the expectation with those things, and they sign off on those at, at the end of the year for the upcoming year. And then obviously, we provide a program with our English language learners that also has, has components, as well as our new staff, making sure that they understand the expectation and what pieces of Papillion-Lavista's curriculum are meant to serve that directly. And then the last piece, of course, is our P V I S, which is our Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. So really, tonight, it's to present the documentation. That's the last component of the American Civics hearing that we actually did a couple of months ago. The other thing that I just want to note is, as part of our Curriculum Toolbox process and development, as you know, the board adopted the new social studies standards a little over a year ago, the state of Nebraska put into place, and then we spend the next year, obviously, taking those, aligning, updating, and evaluating our social studies curriculum. We are currently, towards the end of that process, we piloted, our teachers have worked to build units and assessments that line to make sure that we're providing a high-quality education for our students. As part of that process, we obviously look for new materials. We're going to do a public review of those materials. As part of that process, that's an opportunity for parents to come in and look at those resources and have an opportunity to ask any questions for clarification or see any of the curriculum units the teachers have designed. That will take place on July seventh and eighth, and our parents will be receiving an email tomorrow that has details on that public preview of those social studies materials. So with that, any questions or clarification that you would like on this last piece of our assurances?
Just to say, we have assured our assurances are in order.
Thank you, Ms. Siri. Seeing no further board discussion nor, nor no public comment requested for the, for Item C, we can now properly move on to Item D, Policy Six Thousand Instruction.
It's all right, Mr. Lewis.
Right back to you.
We got both covered, so it's okay. Yeah, this is for the Six Thousand Policy Series, which centers around instruction. We are currently in the process of reviewing those and updating those. We did have some change with legislation as far as courses that are required. You're probably, I know you're aware, we recently had a law passed with computer science and previously, personal finance, and so those are just some of the pieces that we're working into those changes, and next month, I'll bring those to the board for discussion, so.
Great. Again, any, as you do your review, any questions, comments, changes, please send to Ms. Siri. All right, moving on to Item E, Review of Policy Seven Thousand Construction. Mr. Richards.
Yes, thank you. Seven Thousand does involve construction within the district, and the Buildings, Grounds, Finance Committee will have that as an agenda item next week during our meeting to talk about first. So if you have any, as you look through those policies, if you have any thoughts or things on Policy Seven Thousands, please let us know. There is some talk, and we, we talked about this a little bit last year when I first got here, but having some policies available to give us another option, maybe in the construction world, with construction manager at risk, is something that, that we're interested in maybe proposing, so that'll be something we talk about in the committee, bring it before the board for discussion as well, if the committee feels it's a desirable way to at least have the option. You don't have to use it by having a policy, but you can't use it if you don't. So trying to get that, that option available for the board in the future with facility projects that may happen, available for you to use, utilize, would be important.
All right, once again, if you have any changes or questions, please direct those to Mr. Richards for the Seven Thousand series on construction. All right, that concludes Item E, under Section Four Discussion and Information Items. Moving on to our final item F, is an executive closed session regarding legal matters.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Education to enter into closed session to discuss pending district legal matters and consider legal advice to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
I have a motion by Ms. Fisher and a second by Dr. DeFoya to enter into closed session.
Do the calendar first and foremost.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Do you want me to take you?
I'll, I'll do the calendar quick, and then we'll, we'll come back to roll call. Thank you. All right, so our future board calendar, July fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the office is closed for the Independence Day holiday. July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, parental involvement hearing at six P M. here at the central office. July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, wellness policy hearing at six P M. here at the central office. And again, on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, the next Board of Education meeting at six P M. here at the central office. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayling?
Yes.
This way?
Yes, Mr. Mattler.
Yes.
Dr. DeFoya?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Alvis?
Yes.
Motion heard.